Zoom started? Is the Zoom started? Because I still can't hear that.
Yeah, they're checking.
Thank you. We're checking with IT department here about the message for the Zoom people to make sure that the Zoom has started. Okay. And so the next thing, it looks like it changed, so it's got to be doing something. The next thing we'd like to do is to ask the clerk to please call the roll. And before we do it, I'd like to direct everyone's attention to say that we have an additional commissioner who is joining us for the first time, Commissioner Hertzels for the 5th District, and we are thrilled to have her because she has big shoes to fill and lots of work to do. So, welcome. And the clerk will now call the roll and see if we can have a meeting. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shaw?
Here.
Commissioner Getzelman?
Here.
Commissioner Mendoza?
Here.
Commissioner Work?
Here.
Commissioner Gomez?
Here.
Commissioner Deal?
Here.
Commissioner Hartzell?
Here.
Commissioner Roberts, Monsalve, and Gonzalez are not present today. Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Much appreciated. And this is the time when we do want to go through the instructions for how to promote, how to participate remotely. Madam Secretary, would you like to see if you can pull that off? We're having different screens come up, but maybe we can get the right one back.
Yes. So, I will go ahead and, I believe, the display on Zoom is incorrect. They're working that out. If someone who's a panelist can raise your thumb if you're remote and can confirm that audio is working on Zoom and you can hear the presentations. Perfect. Thank you. All right. Yes, so if you're joining today, welcome. Thank you for joining us for today's meeting. If you were joining us by Zoom, we ask, we will have, everybody will remain on mute during the presentation, but if you'd like to participate during public comment on the Zoom platform, you can raise your hand by opening the reactions at the bottom of your screen and clicking the Raise Hand button. And when you're done, you can click that same button to lower your hand. On a mobile or landline phone, you can raise and lower your hand by pressing star nine. Another way you can participate in today's meeting is by sending an email to PCHearingComments@countyofmonterey.gov. This email is also on today's agenda, and staff does monitor that email in real time. So if you have questions, comments, or a document that you'd like to share for any item, you can do so, and staff will do its best to monitor and make that a part of today's hearing, though now that the meeting has begun, there is no guarantee on that. Members of the public who wish to comment during public comment period via Zoom will be granted permission when it's your turn by the meeting clerk. They will give you the option to unmute yourself. During that public comment session, you need to accept the unmute and then go ahead and unmute yourself. To mute and unmute, there's the button that looks like a microphone at the bottom of your screen. If you are on a telephone or mobile phone, mute and unmute using your star six buttons. Thank you very much for your participation. Do you have the wordly?
Great. Do we want to go over the translation, new translation function? Because we're really proud of that.
Yes.
Madam Clerk.
All right. The Planning Commission is pleased to announce the Wordly Pilot Program for Interpretation Services. To utilize Wordly during today's meeting, scan the provided QR code or access the meeting via the link listed on the screen. Once you are logged in, select your preferred language and click on Attend to join. If you are in the chambers, please use headphones or see the clerk for the use of a listening device. If you have any additional questions regarding Wordly, please email PCHearingComments@countyofmonterey.gov for additional support. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right. That gets us to, if I haven't lost the agenda entirely here, that gets us to a time that's set aside for public comments on items that are not on today's agenda but which are under the purview of the Planning Commission. So I want to assure anyone who's here for an item that's on the agenda that there will be an opportunity to comment when the item comes up. But if there's something you'd like to say to us that is not on the agenda, now's your time. Anybody in the chambers like to come up and do that? Not seeing anyone rushing to the front at this time. Madam Clerk, is there anybody on Zoom?
There is no one on Zoom and no emails.
Great. That means we're going to stop that, bring it back to the commission, and we're going to go to the clerk and ask if there are any agenda additions, deletions, and corrections.
For the record, we received and distributed additional comments for non-agenda items that was placed on the dais and also copies over there for the public. We have Agenda Item Number Three for REF 220020, General Plan Housing Element Six Cycle Update. Agenda Item Number Four, PLN 210306, Carmel Self-Storage LLC.
Thank you. And I'm going to go ahead and use the chair's prerogative to move Item Number Four on our agenda before we take up referrals on Item Number Two. So, just to let the staff get organized while we see what the commissioners have to say here. Item Number Four will be coming up before Item Number Two. Okay. This is a time set aside for commissioner comments and referrals. Commissioners, anybody want to say something, get something on the record besides welcoming a new commissioner, which I kind of did, but I couldn't do it too much? And congratulating us in District Five for not having a gap. We have not had to suffer without somebody, and I just think that's splendid. I really appreciate it. All right. Since they don't see any commissioner comments or referrals, I'm going to close that and move to the next item, which is the approval of the consent calendar here that has been presented here. Commissioners, anybody want to pull anything? Anybody in the audience want to pull anything? Anybody on Zoom want to pull anything? No? All right. Are there any comments on the consent agenda as a whole from the panel, from the audience, or from Zoom? Seeing none? Okay. I'm available for a motion on the consent calendar.
So moved?
Commissioner Gomez moves approval of the consent calendar. Commissioner Mendoza seconds that. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. And the motion carries, and the consent calendar is hereby approved. And that brings us up to the aforementioned item number four, and I think Ms. Israel's had a chance to get into her seat and to bring that before us today. All right.
Thank you, Chair Deal. Good morning, Commissioners. Staff requests that the hearing on PLN 210306, Carmel Self-Storage, be continued to February 26, 2025, to allow staff and the applicant to finish the preparation and review of a plan set that follows the Planning Commission direction in the first hearing on October 30, 2024. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would just add for the record that we don't have materials in front of us to allow us to take up the action as a whole at this time anyway. At this point, I'd entertain comments on the continuance from the commission. Anyone? No? Okay. I'm going to open it to the public. Public, are there any applicant or an applicant's representative or any member of the public who would like to comment on this matter? Come on down. You'll have three minutes, and please remember talking about the continuance and not the project. Welcome.
Hello, I'm Gail Hatter from Anthony Lombardo and Associates. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. We agree with the request for a continuance, and that's all we have to say.
Well, thank you. That was very brief. Anyone else want to say something? Please, come on down. We have received a thing for you, but...
Yes. My name is Paula Bertrand. I live amid Carmel Valley, and I am in support of the continuance of this issue as the developer has yet to follow through on the redesign as the Carmel Valley Land Use Advisory Committee asked them to do at the May 1, 2023, public meeting. With this redesign phase, please see to it that all the Carmel Valley master plan policies pertinent to this project, as noted in my letter that you have here today, not just the trail issue, are adhered to and incorporated in the redesign. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bertrand. We will be asked that letter be included in the record going forward. Is there anyone else in the chambers who'd like to speak on that? Come on down.
I'm waiting for it.
Well, there you, that's brave. Okay. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Tracy Kaufman, and I live in Mid Valley where the proposed storage unit is set to be, and I agree with the continuance, and I believe also that it should be a matter of safety, not just the trail. The trail is very important, but I think the whole thing should be scaled down because it's giant and with all the incoming outgoing traffic, even if the trail exists, it won't be safe for people to travel the trail. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Sir?
My name is Darrell Kenyon, and I'm retired. I'm a commercial property owner and former commercial property developer, and wanted to voice my opinion. I saw on Next Door yesterday that this meeting would occur, and I felt remiss if I didn't attend it and express my displeasure at this complete waste of this beautiful piece of property. In other words, there's a song about flowers that Talking Heads composed around 1976, and it talks about the de-evolution of commercial property into fields of flowers. And I visited the site yesterday, and I just thought, wow, what a shame to build a self-storage facility on that field of flowers. And if you vote for this thing and move it forward, you got to feel guilty about wasting this beautiful piece of property. I did have an experience with the self-storage. I remember that Steve Morabito built the first one there against significant public opposition. And I sold the house for a friend of mine, Bill Parsons, who moved to Dallas, and he, there's a little humor here, and it's kind of PG-rated, but Bill didn't want any of the things in his 4,500-square-foot house. He was moving to Dallas, and his wife was insisting on all-new. But Bill wanted to save this blue couch, which I think he'd farted on 500 times. And that went into Morabito's storage unit, along with a couple of ugly pieces of art that his wife did not like. And those pieces of art and that awful couch still remain there. So that's what you're moving forward here. Instead of that field of flowers, instead of many other uses which are permitted under this zoning, of course, affordable housing, a park, a light industrial facility, many things that you could consider in the box and out of the box, you're going to build this awful, or permit this awful 72,000-square-foot unnecessary self-storage unit. Thank you for your time.
So I'm assuming that was in favor of the continuance?
In favor of the continuance.
Thank you, Mr. Kenyon. All right. Anyone else in the chambers wish to speak up on this issue? Seeing no one in the audience, is there anyone online, Madam Clerk?
There are no additional hands up on Zoom and no comments via our email inbox.
Very well. So I'm going to go ahead and close public comment on this matter, and I note that the staff has proposed a date, I believe, on this. Did they not?
February the 26th.
So that's the staff proposal at this time?
It is.
Okay. Back to the commission. Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Commissioner Mendoza?
I'd like to make a motion to continue PLN 210306 to February 26.
I'd like to second.
Very well. It's been moved that we continue the assignment as recommended by staff. Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you. Maybe a little bit off topic. I just wanted to clarify, at the previous hearing, I did ask that the applicant explore reducing the bulk, the two-story perimeter building, and I didn't see that mentioned in the staff report, and I just wanted to make sure that that was something that was being explored or we would hear about at the next hearing.
Staff, looks like they are not sure, but they can write that down and make sure of it now, yes?
Well, I'm not sure if we can discuss the project itself.
Well, this is a discussion of what staff said in their staff report was being continued for. Ms. Beretti?
The adjustment to the size and placement of Building A is the main part of the reason for the continuance, Building A being the largest building.
I think the commissioners just clarified what her request was during that time, and it's the clarification of that mission, and I would hope it could be addressed accordingly. Ms. Beretti?
Yeah, staff will, staff will hear that and will make sure to bring that with the applicant and have...
Perhaps, given that, we might request staff to review the hearing to make sure we haven't missed any other concerns if we're going to bring this back. Great.
Thank you.
That be any further discussion? That being the case, there's a motion on the floor. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. I don't see any abstentions, and Item Number Four is continued as recommended by staff. Thank you very much. And now, we can let those people go and come back to Item Number Two, which is a referral response about a number of items. Ms. Beretti, or Ms., I don't want to say anything about this.
Mr. Sanchez.
Is Mr. Sanchez talking about this one?
Yes.
Ah, yes.
Oh, okay.
Speaking to this.
I thought you were here for. Mr. Sanchez, take it away.
Good morning, Chair Deal, planning commissioners. Today, I will provide a brief update on several key planning efforts currently underway as a part of the 2010 General Plan, Community Plans, and the Coastal Land Use Plan Updates. Starting with the 2010 General Plan, a consultant has been selected to support the development of the Chular Community Plan. A professional services agreement will be presented to the Board of Supervisors next month, with work commencing upon approval. Progress on the Castroville Community Plan continues. A draft is expected to be released for public review this spring, with an adoption anticipated after incorporating community feedback. For the coastal land use plans, the Big Sur Land Use Plan Update Draft is now anticipated for release in the summer or fall of this year. Staff will provide a more comprehensive update at a later meeting. Amendments to the Carmel and the North County land use plans related to accessory dwelling units will be presented to the Board of Supervisors on February 4. And then finally, for the Moss Landing Community Plan, a draft update is in progress with the environmental review process initiated. Staff are actively pursuing grant funding to address sea level rise and climate adaptation as a part of this effort. These projects underscore our commitment to advancing community priorities and addressing affordable housing, infrastructure, and environmental challenges. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Is there anybody, Commissioner Shaw would like to come in?
Thank you. So I just, I guess I want a clarification on the Paharo Community Plan. So, starting can mean that you're just looking for a firm to deal with this, correct? So I guess I'm just wondering, when can the community actually start to see opportunities to have input into the community plan? When will we get out of kind of this, like, just paperwork section of it?
So, are you referring to the Paharo Community Plan? Okay. Yeah, so in our... Yeah, so in our long-range work plan, we have that one anticipated. I don't know off the top of my head, but it's in the coming years. Community can be expected to participate once we have a consultant onboard, and we also do preliminary outreach to the community to let them know that the plan's coming and that we're going to be starting to work with them. As a part of the Paharo recovery efforts, we've been tagging along with those efforts to make sure that we're tied to the community as well.
Thank you, through the chair. So when this says fiscal year 2526, just because I have that in front of me, so I can tell you that. Kind of lost my train of thought there, sorry. Never mind, thank you.
I guess I would just follow up by saying, when it says fiscal year 2526, does that, what point does it actually look like it will start something that people can see on the outside?
Yeah, so, so the fiscal year 2526, it's, that's, that is an estimate for when we think we can get underway, which means when we can assign it to staff and start the preliminary communication with the community, as well as the request for proposal process to get consultant support, including funding requests. So, what I did want to say is, staff is preparing, I believe, at the last, your second meeting in February, we'll be coming forward with our entire long-range work program for discussion, and so we will bring forward projects that we have active assigned and a discussion of those as well that are kind of next up in the queue to discuss more specifically and to allow feedback for the commission on those priorities and assignments as we go to the board for the same.
Any further commissioner comments on this? If not, I do have one, which is that after working on the Big Sur Land Use Plan Update, starting, I believe, in 2003, the current timeline for not actually getting it back to the board until 2627 out there is not something that I'm comfortable with, and we will be working with the board to see if we can get clarification around the priority for staffing to finish that effort up before it becomes obsolete again. Last time, the delays resulted in the product that had been worked on being significantly out of date according to state law and a number of other measures. So, we are very close, I believe, this time, and I would like for us to carry it over the finish line, and I'm hoping we can convince the Board of Supervisors to support that effort, so I'd like to ask staff to bring back a conversation specifically on that schedule at the earliest possible convenience. Anybody else? Ms. Beretti?
Yeah, may I ask for just a clarification? Would it be accept, do you want us to have just a targeted Big Sur conversation, or would it be acceptable for that targeted conversation to come and accompany the long-range planning work program? From staff's perspective, that would give, I think, better context and give us time to take that comment in consideration and evaluate our staffing assignments and priorities to inform it, but we can also come individually with that if is preferred.
If that's to be the second meeting in February for the overall, I'm comfortable with that, understanding the request that I'm making, that we look at ways to expedite completion of that document. That'd be fine with me. Okay, anybody in the audience like to discuss the referral? No? Anybody online, Madam Clerk?
There are no hands up on Zoom and no additional emails.
Okay, I'm going to bring it back to the commission simply to remark that this is actually one of the most important items we could possibly be talking about, and I'm so pleased to see some measurable progress with respect to the community plans, particularly for Paharo and Chular. We've been awaiting those since the adoption of the 2010 general plan. They're long overdue, and I really hope those communities can have the opportunity to move their hopes and dreams forward at the, somewhere in the near future. Anybody, anything? Seeing nothing, I don't think we have to take formal action except to say thank you for the referral, and we'll move on now to agenda item, I believe, is number three. And we're going to have a short break while we reshuffle staff. It'll probably take about five minutes, so, short break, we'll be back in about five And I'm going to bring us back to session, and this is item number three, which is the general plan, housing element, six-cycle update referral, where the Planning Commission wants to know the status, and I think we've switched staff, so Ms. Beretti can tell us about that.
Hi, thank you, Chair Deo, commissioners. I'm Melanie Beretti with the Housing and Community Development Department, and I'm joined via Zoom with my colleagues Jamie Scott Guthrie and Craig Spencer to present this item on an update regarding the housing element. Today's staff is going to be presenting an update. This is also in response to referral number 22.5 for the Planning Commission regarding the draft housing element, six-cycle update, and requesting that Planning Commission provide direction to staff. As a little refresher and background for anyone that's new, the housing element is an element under the Monterey County General Plan. It is the primary planning document where the county plans to meet the housing needs for its residents at all income levels. So this refers specifically to also implementing and achieving our state allocated regional housing needs allocation, or RENA, you'll hear me respond to. This is a required element by state law, and it must be updated every eight years. The current planning period that we are in are for, is for the planning period 2023 through 2031. It requires involvement from the community in planning for housing and addressing barriers to housing. It also is an opportunity to incorporate and update changes pursuant to state housing laws, of which there have been many changes in state law over the last planning period, as well as in order, it's required in order to maintain eligibility for certain state funding for housing projects. So the housing element does quite a bit. But overall, it is, it analyzes the community and the housing needs. It looks at various constraints in housing, in our case, for the unincorporated areas of Monterey County, and it also has us look at how the county performed during the prior housing element fifth cycle, and therefore, what can we do to better achieve its housing allocation and improve programs. Some of the core elements include establishing a list of sites or a sites inventory, which is where the county in the document demonstrates that the county has planned sufficiently to meet the regional housing needs allocation, or RENA, for the sixth cycle. This is Chapter Seven of the draft housing element. It also identifies goals and objectives for the, for housing and for the element, as well as the details of programs and policies to be implemented to achieve those goals. This is the housing plan, which is Chapter Eight. Also new during this cycle and is a requirement to collectively, collectively look at the sites in the housing plan and how well they meet the needs to affirmatively further fair housing, and the fair housing analysis can be found in Appendix B of the housing element. So the six-cycle update for the housing element for our region was due in December 2023, so the county is not in compliance. We are over a year late for having a certified housing element. We have also received an inquiry letter from the California Department of Housing and Community Development, which I will refer to as State HCD and appears as CAHCD on the slides, from their enforcement decision, division, and staff has responded with a required timeline for completion. With that, having a non-compliant housing element exposes the county to various remedies in state law, which include the builder's remedy, which limits the ability for jurisdiction to deny development projects that meet certain state law criteria. We have received eight, we have received applications for eight sites to date, and I'll discuss that in a little more detail on the next slide. This also puts grant funding at risk, and at this time, we are ineligible to apply for the 2025 permanent local housing allocation, which would have been approximately $800,000. That would have gone to housing needs, housing renovations, as well as homeless service needs. We also are at risk of fines and penalties, and ultimately, a jurisdiction could lose its permit authority should the state deem it necessary to step in. So with that, we are maintaining this as a top priority and ushering and moving this process forward so we can come into compliance and get a certified element as soon as feasible. So expanding a bit regarding what's referred to as the builder remedy provision of state law. So again, this restricts the ability of a jurisdiction to disapprove development that meets certain affordability criteria. I'll note that state law has changed as of January 1 of this year, 2025, and so some applications may process under the prior, applications that were received and vested prior to January 1 may process under the former state law, which had different affordability requirements than the, any applications that choose to or received invested and will be processed under the new state law. I won't go into the details of those for today. Also, there are specific findings. Should a jurisdiction find that a project is appropriate to deny, there are specific findings that are limited to one or more of the following, and we are required to find with substantiated evidence to support these findings. So those are related if the project has specific adverse impact on public health or safety, if denial or the conditions that would be required in order to comply with specific state or federal law would render the development unaffordable to low or moderate income households, that could be a finding for denial. And then for lands that are zoned agriculture or resource preservation, if they are surrounded on two sides by similar land use, or they do not have adequate water or wastewater facilities, that could be a finding for denial as well. So, the applications for the locations to date, I have them listed here, I'm not going to go into each specific one, but four of these are located on current opportunity sites that are included in our housing element. One of the applications is on a prior draft opportunity site that was since removed and is no longer included in our housing element, and then the other three are on sites that have not been identified or analyzed as a part of our housing element process. So, in August, we submitted our first draft to the State Housing Community Development Department for review and approval. That was a 90-day review. Staff did receive state findings letter on November 18, and we were able to meet on December 6 with State HCD staff in order to get some targeted guidance and discuss the county's approach to responding to some of those comments. We are here today, during the springtime, the next month to two, we continue to respond to those findings, to revise the housing element for its second submittal to the state. We're well underway in the data collection and information gathering. We're here today to provide a workshop, solicit input. We are tentatively scheduled to bring this item forward to the board on February 4 as well. Once we have an updated housing element draft, we are required to then post that draft for public review, making it available for seven days prior to the next, the second submittal to the state. We're targeting March to get that submittal to the state, and that second review period is a 60-day review. I will note that staff and our consultant team remain in contact with State HCD staff for various items that require clarification prior to that second submittal, so we do continue to have conversations and informal consultation with state staff. Concurrently, we have launched our Programmatic Environmental Impact Report, which is the environmental analysis that we will be doing of our housing, of our housing element. The notice of preparation was released in October, November through November for 30-day public review. We also held a scoping meeting on November 7 for that programmatic EIR, or PEIR, as I will refer to it. So the PEIR, the technical studies are underway, and chapters are just starting to be drafted. Staff anticipates in the spring timeline to have the internal administrative draft for review, and then have that public draft in the late spring to early summer, available for 45-day public review, and then in line with a target of summer to try to have a, to have our final housing element approved, recommended by the Planning Commission, approved by the board, and submitted to the state to certify. We are also, because we are out of compliance, and it has been over a year, we are also required to do concurrent rezoning. The rezoning effort for the housing element must happen concurrently, otherwise, as soon as we get certified, if that rezoning has not happened, we will be immediately out of compliance once again. So we are moving forward with that rezone effort as well, and then to have our final certified PEIR to accompany. So just recapping the August draft, so Planning Commission provided recommendations, staff then brought that to the Board of Supervisors, and based on the policy direction provided by the Board of Supervisors, we submitted our August draft housing element. Just as a recap, our regional housing allocation, our RENA, is a total of 3,326 units that we must plan for, distributed in that first line on the slide, the, that first white line, the RENA, that's the distribution. VLI is very-low-income units, LI is low-income, MOD is moderate-income, and then the above-moderate-income units. So we plan for those through both what we consider pipeline projects, those are entitled to propose projects, as well as some number of accessory dwelling units that we can justify based on our trends. And then the bulk of our planning for our RENA is through our opportunity sites, and that is bringing our opportunity sites to a total planning to accommodate buffer for 6,233 units that are distributed across the various income levels. That is the bottom purple line, those are the totals that were planned for. So, as a follow-up, the board did direct staff to generally apply the RENA distribution of income-level units to the majority of the sites that didn't otherwise have either a developer proposal or, or other state law potential distributions, and... a developer proposal or, or other state law potential distributions. And for sites that were owned by schools, colleges and religious institutions, we did submit a distribution of units by affordability based on what state law would allow. So what that does is it, it allowed us to, we have a high accounting of more affordable units than, for example, a more conservative, a more conservative estimate of 80 above moderate and 20% affordable. So this gets at affording us needing, having a surplus or buffer for the affordable unit income categories. So by state law, we are required to plan for arena with a buffer of not less than 15%. And it is recommended that you include a buffer of between 15 and 30% as a minimum. We submitted this first draft with, with sites and additional higher buffer anticipating that through, we may need to adjust or remove sites based on state's review as well as policy directions. So we did come in at a higher buffer to give us some of that flexibility. So the state findings letter of November 18th that is attached to the staff report today is exhibit A, if you'd like to look at it in more detail. The main categories, so the state has been very consistent in its messaging throughout meetings and correspondence with staff that the housing element must respond to all challenges, constraints and underperformance of existing efforts to address housing issues and do that largely through programs and policies. The state findings letter, the majority of the findings were related to the sites inventory and the need to further demonstrate and substantiate the true potential for residential development on the opportunity sites to develop according to the assumptions made in that draft. A number of the findings were also made regarding the affirmatively furthering fair housing section and also certain housing programs solicited findings. And the need to overall address the state's comments will require amplifying and adding housing programs. Staff and the county consultants are underway with the data and information and additional analyses needed. And we will have a few key policy questions that we've tried to articulate, that we would love to solicit input and guidance from the commission today. I'm going to briefly summarize these policy questions and then staff, after the presentation, we can take each one individually and discuss in more detail should the commission desire. So the first question, when, there was a good deal of discussion and concern over sites near the Marina area. Sites number seven, which was referred to the Blanco Triangle site at the corner of Davis and Reservation Road. It's a very large site in the former Ford Orde. There were some concerns that was discussed at the board. The city of Marina also expressed concerns and specifically requested that instead of site seven, we add a new site number, which is referred to as number 53 in our sites inventory is slightly smaller site within the city's limits. Both are owned by University of California Regents. And so for submittal, the board directed that we would submit both of those. But generally, it was not the intention for both of those sites to move forward in the Marina area. So we do need to discuss and have some consideration of what we do with sites 53 and seven in the Marina area. Also, one of the more significant findings that could have a fair impact on our sites inventory and ultimately our arena ability and buffer is how we address, best address the findings from the state regarding the methodology for large site and the unit count assumptions. And then what that does to our arena buffer. So staff is reviewing the 11 sites that are greater than 10 acres, considered large sites. And those sites do generally utilize a unit distribution assumption that yields over 50% affordable units. That was with our arena distribution as well as sites that qualified for state law for SB4 and then other state law for education institutions, AB 2295. Typically affordable housing projects range between 40 and 50 units up to 130 and 150 and are on smaller sites. So if you think about East Garrison, for example, as a development, it's a 1,400 unit development with three affordable housing, approximately 60 to 65 unit, very low, low income apartment developments on much smaller sites that are subdivided out and owned. So that's kind of this concept of what the state was seen as the trend and flagging for this concern over large sites. So the county does need to respond to findings by providing sufficient evidence that, for each site, that it'll develop according to these higher affordability assumptions. Some sites may be more difficult to substantiate the higher affordability. So for example, privately owned sites, privately owned sites that are farmland zone sites, we have a few of those. Those may be a little more difficult to substantiate the higher assumptions than say sites owned by higher education that could rely on state law to allow that higher affordability and streamline the ability to permit that. And so it's possible we could see the need to redistribute to more of a conservative 80, 80, 20 distribution between market rate and affordable units. So we'd like to discuss that a little bit. And then it brings us to should staff, should we find ourselves as we're responding and working with the state to get a revised and responsive updated draft housing element, if our buffer falls below 15% in any of our affordability categories? And, and really the critical category is the very low income category. That is the most challenging one to build and the one that when we do sensitivity analysis, we are most at risk of dropping below that 15%. If we do need to identify additional sites, some guidance or input on the recommended approach. We've done, we know locally and the state recognizes that we have been very mindful in our deliberations locally to incorporate good planning, community feedback, policy direction, as well as meet state requirements for the sites that are included. But should we need to include additional sites to maintain an appropriate minimum buffer? Should we look at backup sites? We do have some backup sites that we hadn't moved forward with. There are some sites that were prior eliminated. Do we want to look at community areas, high resource areas? We do have builder remedy applications. Or is there some other approach? So again, just some guidance for staff on what might be an appropriate way to think about new and additional sites, should we find ourselves in that position would be helpful. So with that, we just ask that you receive the status update and provide direction to staff. Staff's available for question as well as we have support and additional materials to dive into any of the policy questions or other matters that the commission may deem you'd like to discuss. Thank you.
Thank you, as usual, Ms. Bredy. Mr. Spencer, you look like you might want to say something online? No. Uh-uh. He's nodding his head, no. Great. Appreciate that report. And I would like to ask if you would leave the policy questions slide up while we're having commission discussion and then for the, also for the members of the public. Start with Commissioner Shaw, it looks like you have a comment?
Thank you. I just wanted to very, I am not in favor of adding any sites to community areas that don't have a currently adopted community plan. Living in a community that does not have that and watching development kind of happen willy nilly at the detriment to public safety, environmental safety, the, you know, the culture of our communities, I would loathe to see that happen. So I would be very against any sites being added to areas that are waiting for a community plan. I have a question about the potentially adding these builder's remedy applications and how that would affect the housing element because we're kind of in a bad position anyways with these applications and with this, with adding those in if we needed them, the ones that are going through, would that help the housing element? Would that be making the best of a situation that we really have our hands tied in anyways?
So I think what I can say generally is some of the builder remedy projects look, they look just preliminarily in reviewing them like they realistically could move forward and we would, there's nothing obvious that potentially would prompt the ability to make a finding of denial. There are a couple of the builder remedies that have more significant issues on the sites, resource constraints, water, other, other things where they, from staff's preliminary analysis, they might be more challenging and there is a possibility, at least as proposed, that we may not, that we may be prompted to deny and have to have evidence to substantiate it. So it depends on the sites. We don't really know, but the, especially for, for builder remedy sites that are builder remedy projects that at least preliminarily, there's nothing obvious that, that potentially could be deemed a denial. It's an opportunity where if they're going to get approved anyway, we will be able to take the credit for those regardless. So whether they're included in our sites inventory are no or no, we'll be able to arena credits for those projects. By inclusion in the sites inventory, it does bring other things such as the general, a general plan rezone to a higher density for housing. So, you know, it's, it's a little bit site specific and I think staff would be mindful of that if we were to consider any additional sites in those matters. But again, we'll get the arena credit regardless of whether or not it's included as an opportunity sites and benefits from the additional policies that will relate to opportunity sites.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to just engage on Commissioner Shaw's point first. It's really unfortunate that we don't have community plans because the community areas are where we're supposed to be doing this. That's where the infrastructure is supposed to be focused. That was the whole idea. So just want to grouchily continue my rant, which is in 2010, we had a plan. The plan said to develop community areas in ways that would promote housing that was affordable for the people who work nearby to support the jobs housing balance in those areas and develop healthy communities with community input. We haven't done that. So now we're stuck with the question of whether it's better to try to do the best you can in community areas without a community plan, which means you have to mind read about the future without the benefit of local input. Or it's better to start developing higher density projects outside of community areas where the infrastructure is not focused or developed or planned to support them. And so from my point of view, that's a toughie. I can see staff really struggling with it and I know I do. I would strongly support putting affordable housing development in community areas where appropriate support facilities can be provided. I don't like leapfrogging. I don't like sprawl. I don't like using our farmland for housing and putting people in isolation. I don't like any of that stuff. But at this point, because of the difficulty getting the community plans prioritized, I don't really know what the best thing to do is. And so coming forward, I'd just like for us to be careful to articulate that tension and see if there's any way to site by site on a specific basis, develop community area proposals that are acceptable to the community and would fit in as best we can determine with the community's vision for its future. It may be that we couldn't do it wholesale, but there might be opportunities to do it retail on site specific basis because that really is what we overall intended. And it's just so frustrating to me. I'm sorry, I've been here a while and you come into an idea of planning that you have a plan and you work really hard on the plan and then the plan doesn't happen. And then you're dealt, dealing with the consequences of the plan, the plan was supposed to prevent that we now have to face anyway. So I got frustrated about that. I hear Commissioner Shaw absolutely and believe that in overall, those areas are the best choices if we can figure out a way to do it appropriately. And so that's, that's tough. And then I received, we've received a lot of correspondence with respect to the builder's remedy. So I just want us to go over in words of one syllable, what can, what options we as the planning commission and the county of Monterey have with respect to a proposal that is submitted under the builder's remedy? So we go back and find, and just review what findings we would have to make and what, what, you know, discretion we actually have and with respect to proposals that have been submitted by someone under that umbrella.
Yeah. So, so again, if the state law is, is geared towards this builder's remedy is to intend to help promote housing and limit, limit the discretion with which jurisdictions have to deny housing, again, that meet certain affordability criteria. There, with that, overall, the process, it adds clarity in terms of what jurisdiction...
Can I interrupt? I'm sorry. So simplify.
Simplify.
What affordable criteria? What are the things, I mean, what do we have here that we should be expecting? We get a proposal in for a piece of ground from a developer. What amount of affordable housing is going to be required for a project to proceed under the builder's remedy? What does that depend on?
So prior, so any projects that process under the prior rules, the affordability is 20% of low income categories. So that's low, very low and below. So if it meets that criteria or if it's 100% moderate income level. The new law as of January 1st actually changes that. It's a little more complex, so I'm just going to mention a few that I recall offhand so I don't misquote. It adds additional affordability levels. So for example, if you're a project that has 13% low income, that's your affordability level, you qualify for builder's remedy. If you have, I believe, 10% at the very low income, that can qualify for builder's remedy. If you have six or 7% extremely low. So if you meet these percentages of specific income level types, and, and there are, there are others, if a project meets those, it therefore qualifies. The generally and simplistically jurisdictions can apply objective standards, but cannot apply subjective standards. A lot of our planning, a lot of our land use regulations are more subjective, minimize development on slopes. Those are standards that are harder. And in order to, rather than place conditions, but in order to actually deny a project, you can only deny project based on very specific findings. And those are the findings, which I will just briefly reiterate. You have to make a finding with substantiated evidence that the project would present risk to public health or safety, that you would lose the affordability in the way you would have to condition it or if you, in order to comply with other certain state or federal law. So if to comply with law, you had to condition it such that they could no longer meet the affordability requirements, you could deny. And then again, that unique for agricultural land, if either an agricultural land is surrounded on two sides by similar uses generally, or if it does not have adequate water and wastewater. So any one of those findings, you would have to make with substantial evidence. And those are the ones that would be grounds for the county at this point in time to deny a project should be deemed that is submitted under the builder's remedy law.
Okay. But all of the health and safety findings about water, wastewater, those signs and things are still there.
Correct.
And anything that's required by state or federal law, well, does that include the resource protection requirements that we have in some areas of the county? Because we have state law protecting some kinds of natural resources as well as infrastructure?
Generally, yes, but I can't speak specifically to which ones and no.
I'm thinking endangered species because I'm from Big Sur.
Yeah, endangered species, you can't violate federal law and take endangered species. That's clear. And then coastal, coastal areas, we have limited coastal areas. The state law does recognize that Coastal Act does apply.
Okay. I think Mr. Spencer had his hanging up on the, on the Zoom. Did I see that?
Melanie actually addressed what I wanted to say. There is a Coastal Act savings clause in...
Mr. Spencer, hang on.
Melanie addressed what I was going to say, which is a Coastal Act savings clause in the builder remedy. the builder remedy law.
Okay. So the-
Coastal Act, that's still applying.
As Ms. Barretti stated. Thank you, Mr. Spencer. I'm sorry, we're having technical difficulties hearing your comments. Okay. So really and truly-
May I add one more thing, just to dovetail on the requirements? Now there is-
Ms. Guthrie from-
... that the builder's remedy includes not being required to rezone as well. So if they come in under this AV 1893 update to the builder's remedy, then they wouldn't have to apply for a rezone or a general plan amendment or any other plan amendment.
I'm not understanding. Is that saying that they're not limited by zoning at all? So that's the, the difficulty we have here that in terms of our discretion is if, if a landowner comes in, zoning goes out the window. But the Coastal Act doesn't and the resource protection doesn't and health and safety doesn't and we can't, don't have to build it in the middle of ag land.
Generally speaking, that is accurate and of course, there are nuances on a site by site location specific.
Yeah. So really and truly, the discretion is very limited for us and the amount of affordable units that we have, we get as a result are very few. So that's the way I'm, I'm hearing that. Commissioner Mendoza?
Yeah. Getting back to North Monterey County, I think one of the biggest issues that we have over there, I don't know, I'm sure there's several people that are aware, but our sewage is being treated by Watsonville and recently the fees went up through the roof. I mean, they went, they got really, really expensive. So I think the approach the county should take, even though it's sewage and it's being treated by another, another county, it, it's still fluid. I mean, once it's treated, it's water that can be utilized for other purposes. So we are sending water to a different county where if we're looking for future development, what we should be considering is possibly some sort of treatment facility that is treating North Monterey County, that is treating Romas, that is treating Castleville, I'm sure, you know, whatever sewage they generate, if it's not going to, to Castleville, should be treated. But we actually, what we need in North Monterey County is a treatment facility that treats our sewage for, for the Los Lomas area, Romas, all that area, instead of sending it to Watsonville. Because just recently, as an example, when I've, I've discussed, I think I brought it up to your attention in the past, but I have a commercial building in North Monterey County, which not, not looking for conflict of interest here by any means whatsoever, but I, I was paying $3,700 for, for the sewage treatment and it went up to $13,700. I mean, that's a substantial amount of money and, and that's just a business, but I know that most of the residents went up to, to like $740 per, per home for the, for the sewage treatment. And when you have another county treating it, you don't have a whole lot of say as, you know, this is what we're going to charge you, this is what you're going to pay. You know, there, there's nothing you can do about it. And I don't think the county should be in that position. If we're looking for future development in North Monterey County or the Maustanning area, we should look into a sewage treatment facility so we can reuse that water for other purposes and not be giving it to another county that, obviously, I, I love Santa Cruz County, I do a lot of business there, not, not, not against Santa Cruz County, but we should take care of our own sewage. And I think that part of the, the development of new housing or what have you, we need to really look at our infrastructure. Monterey County, North Monterey County, okay, we put up a, a treatment facility that treats our sewage or what have you, we have a water source, we have all these things ready to go, then at that point, okay, we can build homes. And the housing problem, it, it, part of it is, there's, well, the, the sole problem is that there isn't enough of them. And so if we have enough treatment facilities, treat the sewage, and we have enough water or what have you, then at that point, it's really easy to kind of adapt to whatever changes come our way, to, to develop more homes, to do what's in the best interest of the people. We're so caught up in low income, moderate income or standard market rate, if we building no homes, that will take care of itself. It's supply and demand thing. So consequently, but, but if we try to, to go on every single section of it where, okay, you have to have 20% of low income, 80% moderate or, or, so, so what I'm trying to say is just, we build homes, but we have to plan accordingly and we have to start with infrastructure. We need to have the necessary, Monterey, North Monterey County, we really can't do anything right now until we get that addressed.
Thank you, Commissioner. You just described the purpose of the community plan for the community areas that I was going on about. That's exactly what you need. But I will take some issue with the supply and demand argument because I live in a coastal zone where the demand is worldwide and endless. And so what happens with additional housing if it's not in some way designed to provide some affordability is it just sells and it sells for more and more money every minute. And I think North County has got some of those same issues as people discover how nice it is. So I've been, been beaten over the head with the market model for a long time and there are some exceptions to that when you have a demand that is insatiable as we do in our particular area. Commissioner Mendoza wishes to reply to my-
I would love to. And I agree with you. Every single area is not exactly the same. That's why we, we have different rules for, for different areas. But by the same token, like if, if we have the treatment facilities for North Monterey County, we can change the zoning. It doesn't have to be, you know, one home for five acres. Maybe it can be a, a home per, you know, per acre or what have you. So that can be addressed, but unless you have the infrastructure to do things like that, you can, you can do that. And I completely agree, Big Sur is completely different. We don't want to really do anything down there. It's beautiful.
Some of us want to do a few things, but it's not just Big Sur, it's also the whole coastal area in general where we have a lot of business, we have a lot of hospitality interests, we have a lot of folks who work there who live far, far away and that is not right. We need to, we need to make sure that there are provisions to try to get that trend the other way. And I don't think the market by itself is going to do that personally. I don't want to get us too far off topic. Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you. I just, my takeaway from that really quickly, and it, not saying this because I think staff is unaware of this, but just to kind of have this on the public record said out loud, as far as the wastewater situation in Paharo and North Monterey County, since we pump our sewage to Watsonville, they do have a suspended solids limit that they will accept per day, which is 6,000 pounds. And back in January of 2022, we have a letter from their wastewater manager saying that we were rapidly approaching that and we were less than 400 pounds away in December from that suspended solids limit. So again, until we deal with these infrastructure issues, not just the community plan, which would kind of lay the foundation for, pave the way for those to get done, some of these larger infrastructure issues need to be addressed. We can't be adding high density opportunity sites, even though this is a town that, yes, we could totally benefit from that if they're built, you know, podium built, all that stuff. We just don't have that infrastructure. So I really want to highlight that suspended solids limit and that that was a problem almost, that was three years ago now. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Gomez?
I just wanted to bring back the conversation to the consequences of not having a housing element, right? The, you know, you mentioned, and I'm worried about it, leapfrog development, you mentioned development in farmlands, you mentioned development in areas that there is no infrastructure. Those are all concerns that, that we, that I have and they're hard to fight when we don't have a certified housing element. So getting back to just the timeframe, when do, we anticipate this to be certified?
So keeping an aggressive timeframe and allowing for, you know, hiccups can happen along the way, but we really are targeting summer 2025, I would say late summer 2025, just given requisite, required mandatory public review periods for the housing element itself as well as the programmatic EIR.
So meanwhile, that means we can continue to get builder's remedy projects, right? That we are, in terms of a county and local jurisdictions, very limited in terms of what we could do to stop those.
Yes, we are out of compliance and subject to those remedies until we have a certified, certified housing element and update rezoning along with that. So again, we'll move that forward as well.
Okay. So anything that causes a delay takes away our ability to make decisions about any of this, really. We've got to have on, the, the plan won't be accepted unless we designate appropriate number of realistic sites. If the plan is not accepted, we're going to have sites where, of doing whatever anybody wants to do, wherever they want to do it, and we have very little control about that. So as always, I could actually commend Commissioner Gomez because it was going to be, my point is that the no project, if we don't do this, what happens will be much less within anyone's ability to control, including the public. I mean, the public doesn't have any more, any more opportunities to, to provide a discretion with respect to a project than we just saw listed there, the health and safety and those three items. So it could be anything, anywhere. We don't have zoning at this point, as far as we're concerned with respect to these projects. And then that just goes on to the fact that we also have had an experience with a project that was mentioned, that they might, they might go under the builder's remedy in an application for a single unit. So that was within a residential area and a discussion of a single residential lot that wants to intensify its use under the builder's remedy. So it's all the way from one to infinite in terms of size, numbers, location, et cetera. And saying that we haven't planned for sufficient sewage, we're going to have to spend a lot of time trying to prove that, you know, and it's going to waste everybody's time and energy. So I gotta, I gotta ask everybody to consider what happens if you don't like this plan, if it isn't perfect and you stop this plan, you got no plan and we have no control to speak of, about anything. So I know, it's really, it's just, on so many levels, it's disappointing to me because we tried to do planning and we failed and I hate that. Other commissioners before we move on? All right. So now, unless the, and I think we can come back and talk about the policy questions, I would like to go to the public first and hear what they might have to add and then come back for more of that discussion, if that's okay with everybody. I'd like to invite members of the public forward. We do have some speaker slips here. I'm going to start with those, although there will be an opportunity if you haven't filled one out. Make sure I've got them all. And we're going to start with Tom Jamison, Brian Harrington, and then Andrew Harylook? I'm sorry if I mangled that. And if y'all will come, if, when I call the names, if you come up and get ready to go, that would be great. And everyone will have three minutes to speak. Must be Mr. Jamison, welcome.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. And ladies and gentlemen, my name is Thomas Jamison. I'm an attorney with Kennedy Archer and Giffen in Monterey and I represent Save Tarpe Flats, which is a nonprofit organization that's committed to the dedication, preservation of tarpe flats, which, we don't really have a, a map, I'm sorry, but it's, it is well known as a, it's the grazing land that as you approach Monterey on Highway 68, you will see that it's a lot of open space there, right as you get to Olmsted Road and, and beyond. Just a couple of things, points that I would like to make. And I realize I don't want to get into any, what should I say, any contention on the merits of what's going on, other than to say that the record is replete with evidence supporting the preservation of save, of tarpe flats. And there are a lot of people who are interested in that result and the Board of Supervisors was very interested because they removed it as an opportunity site and that remains the situation I believe that Ms. Barretti has described since it's not being considered as an opportunity site in what is going forward at this point. What I wanted to say though is that notice has been somewhat of a problem. We've actively, Save Tarpe Flats has actively participated in the hearings before the planning commission and the Board of Supervisors and yet we did not receive notice of what the county was doing. Fortunately, we have now reviewed things and we will be, we will be receiving notice. And incidentally, I'd like to compliment Ms. Barretti on her efforts on this. She, she has a lot on her plate, I think, and she's, she's doing very well. What I would like to say, and again, not to get into the merits, but what I would like to say is that we feel that the, the builder's remedy, which is on one site, one of the sites on tarpe flats, does not qualify for a builder's remedy. And I'd like to follow up on Commissioner, Chair Deal's comment that we don't really know what, I mean, what kind of state and federal laws can we deny builder's remedies on? In any event, don't, that will, excuse me, just conclude my comments, other than to say, we would like to be able to address or receive a plan that has been proposed on the builder's remedy. And I've requested that in writing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Harrington and then Andrew Harylook and followed by Stephen Thayer, please.
Hi, good morning. It's Mrs. Diane Hennington.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Hennington.
It's my handwriting. Okay.
We don't do handwriting in school anymore.
Yeah.
Welcome.
All right. Thank you. I'm speaking on behalf of Communities for Sustainable Monterey County, a 501(c) California Public Benefit Corporation. Our mission is to help our communities equitably implement sustainable and regenerative practices to slow and adapt to climate change. We engage and educate individuals, businesses and policymakers to create changes needed to safeguard the long-term health of our environment and resources. CSMC opposes the application and development of the 1101 Olmsted Road project. Proposal by the Sausita Land Company is unsuitable for development due to zoning resource, conservation and environmental and cultural factors. And there is no water or infrastructure there. We'd like to highlight comments on the six-cycle housing plan by the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, quoting, "Based on aerial imagery and species occurrence records from the California Natural Diversity Database, as well as CDFW familiarity with biological resources in the plan area, the proposed plan area is known to and/or has the potential to support special status species and these resources need to be evaluated and addressed prior to any approvals that would allow ground disturbing activities." Likewise, we draw your attention to the California Native American Heritage Commission letter regarding consultation with tribal representatives on this land, which has been identified as being of cultural importance to local indigenous peoples. The lands adjacent to the property in question, also known as tarpe's flats, they were, got by the Big Sur Land Trust and Trust for Public Land acquired property right nearby. Mitigating features of the proposed development in tarpe's flats will certainly be subject to the same constraints, which include rare and federally protected plants, documented wildlife corridors, fernal pools and wetlands, and archaeological sites of Native Americans. We therefore submit that the 1101 Olmsted Road proposal is unsuitable for development and hope you will take this into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr., whose name I continue to mangle, followed by Mr. Thayer, James, and James Washington.
Good morning, Commissioners. And don't worry, you're not the first nor last person to mangle my, my last name. It's pronounced Haverlok. It's of Ukrainian descent. It's of Ukrainian descent, the Ukrainian flag.
I apologize.
And I thank you for that. Commissioner Dell, I share your frustration, and I feel for you when you mentioned earlier about the need for putting together a plan, getting the plan together, and not having seen the plan executed and seeing problems result from not executing those plans. That's a, a problem that many of us have shared in our professional lives. So my name is Andrew Haverlock. I'm the president of the Save Tarpe Flats organization. I represent roughly 250 homes in the vicinity of Tarpe flats. We are a nonprofit organization and committed to preserving the environment and the archaeological and historical land that's called Tarpe flats, and we, and we want to see these lands eventually preserved by the Big Sur Land Trust or the Trust for Public Lands, to create a continuous preserve corridor from Jack's Peak all the way down to Ryan's Ranch and beyond. That's our goal, is to take that land and get it into conservation and preservation. There's a proposal for the builder's remedy that my previous speaker has talked about for Olmstead Road. I can't add much to that. She spoke very eloquently and covered all the bases. This land should not be used for development. It fails on a number of reasons. She mentioned many, many of them. I mentioned all, she mentioned all the ones that I planned to mention and then some. So I compliment her in her thoroughness, but that land should not be developed. It is archaeological, it is historical, it's public safety, it's federal law, we believe, there's resource preservation, there's no adequate water. We don't think it should be developed. That's our opinion, and again, as I said, I represent a nonprofit organization of 250 homes adjacent to this property. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your thoughts. And we'll have Stephen Thayer, James Washington, and then Randy Hamilton, please.
Good morning. My name is Stephen Thayer. I live just up the hill from Tarpe Flats and the Oak Tree Views Housing Development. I just wanted to pose three questions that maybe will be addressed later on in the meeting. If not, I can follow up as appropriate, but I haven't been able to find anywhere online where the zoning is described for the parcels on Tarpe flats. And so my first question is what the zoning is for the parcels on Tarpe flats and where I can find that in writing. I'm also wondering, and my second question is whether there are contemplated changes to that zoning, whatever it may be. And my third and last question is how the SEQA process will play out here, when it will kick in to whatever development is proposed for Tarpe flats. My understanding is that the builder's remedy, remedy does not bypass SEQA, that that process still has to be followed. So I'd be interested to know at what point that process begins. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I'm sure staff can help you with the mechanical ones, and we'll ask them at the end of this comment to address the others. Mr. Washington, is it?
Yes.
Welcome.
My last name's easy.
Thank you.
Going to the point of Tarpe flats, I just want to bring to your attention that one of the endangered species is called the California Tiger Salamander, and it's been on the endangered list for federal list since 2000. And since 2010, it's been on the Species State Protection List also. So in order for them to build anything, they have to go past that. So I'd just like to know what's going to happen. Thank you.
And thank you. It'd be Randy Hamilton, and then Glenn Hennington.
Yeah, my name is Randy Hamilton, one of the residents of Oak Tree area. As a, living near and walking the neighborhood, it's super clear that's a wildlife corridor and why the Big Sur Land Trust would be interested. I support all the other comments that preceded me here. The one thing I wanted to add on the public safety concern, and it's a very real concern, we, we fear it all the time, fire. We haven't heard about that much today, but directly behind our house is a pine preserve, pine obviously being kindling for fires. None of it gets maintained. It's a preserve, so there's literally hundreds of trees falling down and debris all behind there, and that butts up to Jack's Peak. So fires are a concern, but how it relates here to the topic that I'm, I'm interested in is, is fire egress out of that area. So without even all the housing development that we're talking about, hundreds of new homes and apartments and everything else in that area, it's just a traffic study. How do you get out of this area? And additional homes of a pretty good magnitude just magnifies that whole concern. So if you just kind of get an aerial view, there's, there's limited egress getting out of there. Obviously, we all know about the traffic issues on 68 and how they have roundabouts that have been, are trying to be planned, but again, with the frustration of all this stuff, they're already trying to figure out how to deal with traffic without adding literally hundreds of more homes. So just wrapping up there, fire, public safety, housing, it's, it's, it's a concern right now, let alone adding more housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your thoughts. And so Mr. Glenn Hennington, it's the last speaker slip that I have. Welcome, sir.
Good evening, Commissioners. Our, our neighbors basically said it all. I've been a fire protection consultant for 45 years. I mentioned this last time I was here. They've only had one fire out in that field, and that was due to the negligence of four people who weren't paying attention. If you're going to have hundreds of people in that area, there's going to be a fire, and it's going to go uphill. We have been watching over the last two days what has happened in Palisades and Altadena and Pasadena, and it's tragic. If you build there, it will happen there. And the people of Monterey County will wonder, why did we allow this to happen? So I say no. Thank you very much, and Happy New Year.
Thank you for your thoughts. Anyone else who would like to come forward, please feel free, free to do so. You'll have three minutes.
Sometimes when we name something by a number, it's a way of distancing.
If you'd care to give your name, that would be great.
My name's Lisa Villafranca.
Thank you.
And I did fill out a speaker slip, so.
Oh, maybe I lost it. I apologize.
Sometimes when we name something by a number, it's a way of distancing ourselves from it. Numbering it makes it less than, makes it an object and not a living thing. I'm here today to put a face on address number 1101 Olmstead Road, the land named Tarpe flats. Iconic Tarpe flats is one of the last undeveloped, highly scenic coastal marine terraces in Monterey. A unique geologic formation caused by tectonic land lift and changing ocean levels occurring over centuries, Tarpe flats is a singular cultural, biologic landscape possessing significant historic and ecologic value. It is the last wildlife corridor that connects Fort Ward to Jack's Peak and Palo Corono Regional Park. Its lands are a host to a multitude of wildlife. At least 23 occupancies of sensitive plants and animals have been documented there, and many of these are protected by federal and state endangered species laws. One example is the California Tiger Salamander. Tarpe flats has historic importance to tribal nations as well. Yet today, with all its gifts, far too many to list, Tarpe flats faces the looming threat of being paved over, destroyed, and gone forever. Good stewardship of the environment is not just a personal responsibility, it is a public value. Our duty is to use the land well and sometimes not use it at all. This is our responsibility as citizens, but more than that, it is our calling as stewards of this earth. We are all responsible for preserving this precious land that is so much more than a number. It is a piece of heaven on earth, and its name is Tarpe flats. Save Tarpe flats. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there anybody else in the chambers who would like to speak who's not already done so? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, do we have hands online?
We do have one hand up. It's Michael Hope. You should be able to unmute now.
Hello, thank you so much for taking the time to hear me. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Well, again, Michael Hoppy, I'm a resident of the Oak Tree area. I represent not only my neighbors, and I'm part of the organization, but I also represent my kids. My daughter's 10 years old and 13 years old. I represent the numerous people who will come and park their cars and walk up and down past one of the last remaining open meadows in Monterey. I ask to, I ask the, your team today to consider doing something. I ask you to take a drive into South San Jose, or maybe the next time you're headed into the Bay Area, and look around at the hills and look around what's next to Highway 101. When I grew up there in the 80s, that was all orchards, and it was beautiful. Now it's been paved, now there are buildings there, many of them vacant, and I would consider that that land will never look like it used to. And so now I would also ask you, if you have the time to do it, to take a drive over to our meadow on Via Malpasso, and just look and see what my daughters and see what my neighbors enjoy. There are days when we see multiple coyotes out there, many deer, peregrine falcons diving in to get a meal. It's incredible, and it is one of the last places with undeveloped space in our area. And I hope that you would see that it would be an absolute tragedy to build, even if we can build. Leave it alone, and let's preserve it for generations to come. I want my grandkids and their grandkids to be able to peer upon that meadow and see the new coyotes and the other animals there. So thank you for your consideration. It's much appreciated.
And thank you for your comments. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone else?
We have no additional hands up on Zoom, but we do have an email that was received to the PC inbox from Robert Bell.
Go ahead and, and read that into the record, please.
Yes. It says, hello, my name is Robert Bell, and I was a long-term property owner in the city and now in the rural county, and a member of Save Tarpe Flats. I will be brief. Having read the requirements of builder's remedy, I cannot see how the property in question would qualify for that program. Thank you for your consideration, Robert.
Thank you very much. All right. If there's no further public comment, I'm seeing none. I'm going to come back to staff. Do you want to address anything we've heard from the public before we continue our conversation?
Yeah, I think just, just, I want to be able to empower people with information. So if you'll allow me, I'd like to just share a couple of resources for folks.
Actually, if you want a few minutes, I think we really do need about a 10-minute break, and we'll come back and, and try to hurry things along, but we don't want to leave when people are talking. So let's take a recess for 10 minutes, and we'll come back to that. So let's take a recess for 10 minutes, and we'll come back to that. We'll do, so I'll ask Ms. Beretti to respond to anything she may have heard in the public comment that thinks would be good if we talked about. Ms. Beretti?
Yeah, thank you. I want to first start with asking Director Spencer. I think he had something he wanted to respond, and then I'll have some additional responses there.
Yeah, thank you, Melanie. Can you hear me?
Turn you up a bit if we could, if it were possible.
Try and move closer to the microphone here. Is that better?
A lot. I may need some tech help.
It may. Let me see if I can lean in here. How about now?
It's a little better.
Okay. So I just wanted to start by saying that today we were, we're presenting a status update on the housing element and its progression through our, our public review, hearing, a drafting process, the next steps. We weren't, we are not here to debate the Builder's Remedy application that's been applied for on the Tarpe Flat site. There is a, a relationship potentially to the Tarpe Flat site and the questions posed by Melanie in her presentation. And that is, we have the findings from State HCD that bring up a number of issues. And what ultimately we're looking to do is finalize the housing opportunity sites so that we can update our draft and get it back to State HCD for the review, as well as continue to prepare and finalize the environmental impact report. So the questions really dovetail into one another. There, there is a question of what to do with two different Marina sites. And I'll use that as an example. If one or more of those sites are eliminated from our housing opportunities, that is a large number of units that then need to be found or provided for in our housing opportunity designations elsewhere in the county. If they remain, we still have capacity. The next question was the unit distribution on large sites. So if we change the unit distribution so that there are fewer lower-income units being built on larger sites, that could also change the, the buffer or the number of units that we have planned for. And that would then bring into the question, where do we make up for those lost units? And one of the ideas of the many was to consider potentially bringing back sites that were part of the original housing draft. This Tarpe Flat site was removed by the board and is not in our housing element currently. So I just wanted to set that as the, as the, bring it back to the subject at hand, and I'll turn it back over to Melanie.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer. I very much appreciate that, and I think we'll all try to, to back you up. But I would just say that with respect to public comment, we just want to hear what the public has to say. And it's sometimes not directly on topic, but often insightful and helps us move on those items that we specifically are being asked to address. But thank you very much for the redirect. Ms. Beretti?
Yeah, so I really just wanted to provide a couple of resources for the public. Again, the Builder's Remedy applications that have been applied for and will be processing, those will be a separate process that individuals can track. We are working actively on developing a Builder's Remedy resource webpage that would both be a resource for developers looking to come in and apply through that law, as well as for members of the public who are interested in tracking and following what's happening under that. So I'm just going to do a brief share screen. That is not yet live, but I will show individuals where they will be able to find that on our webpage. I'm sharing via Zoom. Is it up? Okay, there it is. So if you go to the Monterey County Housing and Community Development website, a couple of things. So under our Permit Center, so you look at these tabs at the top. Under the Permit Center, we have a number of very specific pages. We will be adding a Builder's Remedy page or Housing Accountability page under this tab. So individuals who are interested, and the public can go there for resources very soon. We hope to have it up today. And again, as we have more materials and information and resources, we will add there. So that's a good place for individuals to know. I also did want to respond to, respond to questions that the public may have about zoning or information about individual projects that are locations that are available. The really most easy and best way to access zoning information is if you, again, from the Housing Community Development webpage, go to our GIS Maps page. That's the page that's up here. There are two maps that are very useful to the public and staff as well. We use them all the time, the Parcel Report web app and the Zoning lookup. So those are available to members of the public. The zoning lookup, lookup app is the most direct. If you just want to go put in a parcel and/or an address and look up what that zoning is, and then from there, it'll pull up, well, I'm not going to go there today, but from there, it'll pull you up into the web app. And then it will also then link you to the regulations that apply to that zoning. So you find what the zoning is, and then you can go look up the regulations that apply to that zoning for uses that are allowed and permitted, et cetera. I think, unless I'm missing anything, otherwise, I didn't have other responses. We can certainly follow up with any individuals that have more specific, site-specific or project-specific questions offline.
Thank you.
Yeah. If I could add briefly to Melanie's discussion, the Tarpe Flat site individually is, is, shows as under review. The reason for that is it was zoned Rural Density Residential, and it, with an urban reserve and design control overlay. And it was designated in the 2010 General Plan as a housing, affordable housing opportunity site. So it's given sort of a special treatment. We are in the process of reviewing a number of zoning updates that implement the General Plan, and that's why it would be showing under review. But the, the zoning as it existed before applying the General Plan special treatment designation was Rural Density Residential.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Ms. Beretti to put back up the policy questions that we were to debate after we had this particular public comment and clarification thereof. But while that's happening, I just want to confirm my understanding that under the Builder's Remedy, we will not be able to rule out a project until we do the review. So when a, when a proposal comes in, we have to look at it. You can't just say, no way, we don't want to look at that particular application. And my understanding would be that should a project come in, we still would have that project would be required to do environmental review. There's one question about CEQA. That was, it's a state law. Am I correct in assuming that the CEQA process would be, have to be followed on any application, including a Builder's Remedy application?
Yes, that is correct. So any projects that come in, they still follow the proper discretionary approval process. There are limits to how many hearings, limits to timelines that shorten that so that basically we don't hang up decisions on housing development projects. And they are also subject to environmental laws, including California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA. So yes, those are all true. And again, individually, each would move through the process accordingly.
Right. So we get one of the Builder's Remedy application, we're going to follow through on that. We can't just say, go away, we don't like it.
That is correct.
Okay.
And I did want to-
Even if we felt that way, which I'm not saying we do.
Correct. And I did want to just say, when, if we're ready, if, if we could please have staff write, screen shared, that has the policy questions.
Thank you. And so I'd invite, this is the point where I think we need to provide some direction to staff. So commissioners, thoughts on, on these questions? Anybody?
Chair?
Commissioner Gomez?
I think in terms of-
It's not that hard. You can do it.
In terms of backup sites, I think we should look at what we were, we looked at before and areas that are, are developed, you know, have developed community plans, right? In areas that we consider urban areas, in rural, in the unincorporated parts of our county. And we might also consider looking at prior eliminated sites if the need be.
Okay, I'm going to start my thoughts with the University of California-owned sites and ask why we would want to not use both of them. And if one of them is in Marina, why is it something we have to do? Why isn't it something that would be subject to Marina's decision-making and count against their RENA applications?
Yeah, so the, the concern largely was by having housing development at Site 7, which is essentially east of the Marina Airport. At that site, it's a very large site, that's a significant amount of development, and the concern was that it would be a drain on resources for the city. And also, it, it sort of goes against the city's direction to try to do more city-centered growth. The city, and, and there are various other reasons that concerns were raised. The city specifically suggested Site 53 is an alternative, stating that they would be happy to enter in whatever agreement or otherwise for the county to get the RENA credits. It would entail a negotiation of an MOU. We'd need to work with UC Regents. So, so it's, it's a trickier site to, to include for those purposes. We don't know if it's a site that, as we proposed again, that the state will accept. But the goal was, again, it was not to be additive and have so much unincorporated development and unincorporated area near the city to not conflict with their city-centered growth plans, essentially summarizing it. And from the board discussion, in particular, from the discussion and comments from the supervisor who represents that area, it was a preference to consider them both, but not to necessarily include both sites. That's-
My, my, that, that is a little muddled, but okay. My response to that, I don't know what other commissioners might think, is we need the space. It's near an urban area. If we have the jurisdiction over a space, we, I would like to see us designate it. If it's within the city of Marina, then we don't. So that would be something that we could look at later. It's clearly going to take longer to do something that is in Marina, and so I don't want to slow this thing up. I want to get us back to where we're making decisions based on our stated values. So my personal sense would, would be, yeah, we want them both. If we have jurisdiction over one of them, let's put that one in. If we don't have jurisdiction over the other one, we don't have to worry about it in this plan. It can be a player to be named later, and if we do, we should put it in. Commissioner Gomez?
I, you know, I, I should have mentioned that Chairman Dill, I completely agree with what you said. I think we should start with those sites. If for some reason we're not able to go there, but I think then we should do something else. But definitely, I think that the reason why we included them, because they're, it was because they're near urban areas and because they're near the city and services.
And near the university, where we assume that the housing would be primarily focused, I would think.
And, and as I understand, too, the university was in favor of this idea when they came forward, some representative came forward.
Well, yeah, and I trust staff to run through that. But again, my thoughts are, are that Commissioner, who was it?
Me.
It was Ms. Commissioner Getzelman?
I know, huh?
I know, all right. Commissioner Getzelman?
Well, at least it's, I'm starting off the new year on a, on a new leaf, or whatever the terminology is. Yeah, I concur. And, and I, Ms. Beretti, which of the two sites has the most potential for develop? I mean, it, it sounds like 53 might be limited in development potential, where 7 is not. Is that an assumption I can, is there more potential in the larger site for more units?
So Site 7 is in unincorporated county. That is the Blanco Triangle. That is the larger site and has over 900 units planned on it. Site 53 is close, is within the city of Marina, a smaller site. I forget the number of units that are planned on that site. I believe in the 400 range that could be accommodated, we estimated on that site. You are accurate in that University of California has come before, come to the commission and board expressing their interest intent to develop housing and some other potential mixed use, mixed uses at Site Number 7. To my knowledge, county has not yet had a direct conversation or heard directly from the UC regarding Site Number 53. That is something that we've identified as a program. If we include that site, we will do the appropriate outreach, developing an agreement with the city, an outreach to University of California Regents. But again, that's within the city of Marina and would require those steps.
Yeah, thank you. So I would be in, I would be in favor of the larger site with the most potential, in addition to the reasons that were already stated by my fellow commissioners. Thank you.
Others? I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to rule out either one if we, I mean, if it's a trade with the city of Marina, I would strongly suggest we follow Commissioner Getzelman's thoughts and stick with the bigger number, because we need the bigger number. But if it's said or possible, we could use all that housing. There's no question about it. It may or may not be possible, but as a policy direction, that's what I would think I'd like to see us do. And I'm seeing some nods. Is there anybody who disagrees and wants to weigh in on that? No, so that's a policy direction. Okay. The methodology for large-site unit count assumptions. Anybody want to weigh in on that? I'd like to say that I see no situation in which reducing the percentage of affordable housing is a good idea. So if there's any possibility for increasing the percentage of affordable units- So if there's any possibility for increasing the percentage of affordable units, that is what I would like to see us do. So if there's methodology that works in that direction, I would support it. If there's methodology that works against it, I would not. Anybody nods? Anybody disagree? Okay. And now we're down to the discussion of what to do if we need additional units because our buffer is no longer what we thought it was because we've eliminated sites. My first question for that is, what is the question with respect to builder's remedy applications? If the question is, should we prejudge those as being appropriate, I would hesitate. But my understanding from what we said earlier is that should they be approved under the current application, they would count. But that doesn't help us with the plan, is that?
Yeah, so staff is not recommending. We were trying to brainstorm and just present a very broad range of potential options for discussions so that you all, so we're not advocating for any of these. We are acknowledging that for builder's remedy in certain sites, there may be a high likelihood that that housing happens whether or not we include them. Again, we will get the credit for any applicant, any proposal, whether it's builder's remedy or any other housing proposal that is implemented and constructed during this, during the planning window, whether or not we include it as an opportunity site. So the consideration for opportunity sites is really sites that you deem are appropriate to target development and be subject to kind of the benefits of being, I call them benefits, but the policies and programs targeted towards those opportunity sites. The rezoning to higher density housing, that's a requirement. Some of our policies will apply specifically to opportunity sites. So it's really, the question is just where best to direct staff to go if we need to look for new sites. And this was just a smattering of ideas to get that conversation started for you. Because our hope is that we don't have to come back for additional policy direction. We can get enough guidance on what's important, what you all want to see prioritized in that so that then staff can implement that should we find ourselves in the situation.
In the interest of speed.
In the interest of speed, correct.
Gotcha.
And if there's anything you feel strongly do not do, that's important for us to hear as well.
Okay. Commissioners, Commissioner Mendoza?
Yeah, in reference to some of the builder remedy applications, I think that you should add some if need be. The only thing is, we need to take into consideration that they do have the potential for development when it comes to, once again, that there's sufficient water, sewage and all the capacities that are required for development. But yeah, I would include some of those since we already have, you know, interest for development on them.
Others? I'm concerned about that because there, there's already limited discretion with respect to builder's remedy applications. And so if we then say that we're going to include them in our housing element and undertake to rezone them prior to the application being considered, it seems to me to be a big step to authorize staff to take without backup. I mean, it's like, we know some of these are not in the areas people would prefer. And so I'm a little hesitant on that. That's my concern is when we include them in this plan, that's followed up by substantial actions in terms of zoning, rezoning the property, addressing the general plan issues that may be in play. So anyway, I'll come, Commissioner, let's go to Commissioner Mendoza back again because I yet talked on his point, and then we'll come to you.
I do understand your hesitation. I did not mean every single one of them that was there. But I mean, you can actually look off of those and see which ones might make sense as a backup alternative site for, say, if need be. I mean, if you have 10 applications for, say, maybe you might need to add two or three of those, that makes sense. I mean, it's not a green light for all. That was kind of what I was.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Gomez?
Kind of related, I think if we were to go and do all of them, I think it might create a, what concerns me again is it's in the effort to delay our process and moving forward with the process that we currently have. So I don't want anything, I don't want to do anything that's going to delay our process to get our housing element approved.
Commissioner Shaw?
How likely, thank you, how likely is it that our buffer is going to fall below 15%? Like, are we, is that kind of maybe going to happen, or is that kind of a far off thing that is unlikely to happen?
Yeah, so I ran a, I just paid to that question. We can't know exactly, it depends where all the sites land. But for, for example, if we, if there's a decision to take out one of the significantly large sites, 7 or 53, plus if through the state, they don't accept our justification and evidence that we provide for the ability for large sites to develop at the higher affordability levels and we need to redistribute, we have to redistribute a couple of those sites, that could drop us below. If not, we, you know, we've got some buffer. So it really depends what happens with the individual sites. One thing I could say, which, if we go back to the conversation that you all had, I think in the discussion prior to public comment about, for example, community areas and the importance of a plan, the importance of areas, good planning practices in areas where we have infrastructure that could potentially support the development. You could also, rather than targeting sort of specifically what sites or what locations more kind of the criteria you would like us to prioritize in when we, if we have to bring additional sites. One thing I will say, prior eliminated sites and the sites that we had had kind of queued up on backup, those have gone through kind of a screening with our consultant. So those are a little less effort to revisit than entirely new sites that we need to then also go through a brand new screening on. Not that that needs to affect, but again, if some general guidance, those are things that staff is certainly considering as well for determining.
Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you. So I guess, I'm wondering, like, do we need to absolutely give direction on that buffer question right at this moment, or can we kind of wait it out and see, do we even need to deal with that? Or would that be too late in the game and we'd be scrambling to catch up?
I mean, what I would say is, any, any guidance you have for staff is very helpful. I think also as staff, we are mindful of the, the volume of discussion, policy discussion, as well as public comment that we've received, as well as good planning practices, that we are certainly going to take all of those into account should we need to add a site back in. So it's really at your discretion if there is some consensus or anything you all do feel strongly about to help guide that. Otherwise, we would sort of take everything we've heard and include that in our deliberations for potential sites. And again, we're also taking this to the board. The board itself may have very strong feelings in one way or another. And so. Thanks.
Other thoughts? I would have to say that I think the eliminated sites have had much more political conversation. I don't know that we've had quite that level of discussion around backup sites. So I might suggest that those would be a place to begin should you need them, as opposed to starting with the eliminated sites. And I'm going to go, I'm going to, I'm going to take a hard right here and because of the number of people who have provided committed, ongoing public comment about the Tarpe flats area, which currently, with no changes, is a designated affordable housing overlay site in the current general plan today. So if we don't do anything, that's where we're at with that site. So we've got to move ahead and decide what we're doing next. If we don't do that, we are stuck with what's there now on the paper. So let's just be mindful that we lose our discretion, we've lost discretion in many matters already due to the timing, and that the cost of not taking action quickly now is that you have what's on the books today. So I mean, that's where we're at. So just keep in mind that this constant talk about speed and whether or not something perfectly reflects what you want it to see, make sure you look at what happens if we don't do something. That's really important all the time. So I'm, that goes back to, I understand the prior eliminated sites have had significant public discussion and political process. So I would think they would be, I'd suggest putting them at the end of the list, whereas backup sites might still have some potential. And piggybacking on Commissioner Mendoza's comment about the builder's remedy applications, I think that the granular approach would make a lot of sense. If there are some that are appearing in areas which we think are appropriate, it would be great to look at those and say, yeah, this is something we think would fit in. If there aren't, if they aren't, no. So maybe that's just a way to do an early sort before we start the actual processing. Just my thoughts about that. Anybody else? All right. Staff, do you have sufficient muddled discussion and direction?
Yeah, I believe we do, thank you.
Further? No? All right then, thank you very much. This is an important matter. I appreciate everybody's time and energy. So that gets us all the way to, what time is it right? It's 11:20, yay. That gets us all the way, I believe, to item five on our agenda after we have a slight change of cast here. We're going to do a little bit of movement, but it won't take long. And we should be able to proceed on item number five on our agenda, which is PLN 210174, the Era Energy LLC discussion. And thank you again all for coming and sitting through everything. We do appreciate your time and energy. It is just a quick change. I mean, it's like musical chairs here.
We've got it down packed.
Ms. Kanga, you want to take this away when ready?
Yes, ma'am. Could you please share staff rate? Thank you. So, good morning, Chair Deal, members of the Planning Commission. I'm Anna Jeanette Kanga, here to present on the mayor application. File number is PLN 210174. The subject property is located at 66880 Sargent's Road in San Arto, within the South County Area Plan. Zoning of the site, which is outlined in red on the graphic, on the graphic on the slide, is heavy industrial with mineral extraction. The project before you involves construction of a 11 megawatt private solar facility upon approximately 35.5 acres of land. This facility would fully offset the energy demand for the site. The project also includes consideration of development on slopes in excess of 25%. On November 13th, 2024, the Planning Commission considered this item and, following public testimony, continued the item to January 8th to allow staff adequate time to address comments and concerns raised by the Office of County Council and the California Department of Conservation Geologic Energy Management Division, or otherwise referred to as CalJAM, as well as provide additional evidence to justify allowing development on slopes in excess of 25%. Staff is now returning with a revised draft resolution. There are 65 abandoned oil and gas wells within and near the development area. CalJAM has identified that 20 of these wells were abandoned to the standards at the time, however, were not abandoned to today's standards. CalJAM does not recommend re-abandoning these wells and raise no concerns over the protection of groundwater supplies. It did, however, in their November 8th letter, make two recommendations summarized on this slide. One, record a disclosure notice on the property that discloses the presence of all onsite wells and the potential significant issues associated with development near oil and gas wells. And two, that any soils contaminated with hydrocarbon be disposed of properly. CalJAM also categorically advises against building over or impeding access to oil, gas or geothermal wells. And should a local jurisdiction permit development over these areas, the responsibility in reabandonment would be shifted from CalJAM to the property owner and the jurisdiction, the permitting This raised concerns by the Office of County Council relative to potential claims, damages, injuries, accidents and losses arising from implementation of the project. So to address CalJAM, CalJAM's and County Council's concerns, staff recommends a revision to mitigation measure HM1 and the addition of condition 19. Both are presented here on this slide. The strikeout, underlined version of revised mitigation HM1 is also included as Exhibit G of the staff report. This language was bolstered to require the applicant owner and or project operator to defend, indemnify and hold harmless the county of Monterey from all claims, injuries and accidents arising from implementation of the proposed project. And that all, although the project sites or project site soils were remediated in March of 2015, and that evidence is included as Exhibit F of the staff report, contaminated soils are unlikely to be encountered during construction. However, the language of mitigation measure HM1 also includes a revision to clarify that the applicant owner, project operator is responsible for any required soils remediation. And finally, the addition of condition 19, which is attached to the draft resolution, requires the owner, applicant, the owner or applicant to record a onsite oil and gas disclosure notice. So with these modifications and the addition of condition 19, all comments have been fully The graphic on this slide shows the 160 acre parcel boxed around in red, and the development area is outlined within that box. The areas shown in magenta are the general areas we show in GIS that have slopes in excess of 25%. So as directed by the commission, staff revised finding number one, evidence L, to clarify how the project meets the criteria to grant a use permit to allow development on slopes. In this case, relocating the 35.5 acre solar facility to another portion of the subject property would result in a greater amount of development on slopes, as you can also see on this slide. It would also result in threatening active or idle oil wells surrounding the development area. And it would also require additional ground disturbance to connect to the existing substation. Additionally, the designated location of the proposed development better achieves the goals and objectives of the general plan and the South County Area Plan by generating renewable energy to fully offset an oil operations PG&E demand while minimizing natural landform Therefore, it is staff's recommendation that the Planning Commission adopt a mitigated negative declaration and approve a general development plan and combined development permit to allow construction of the solar photovoltaic facility and site improvements, and adopt a mitigation monitoring and reporting plan. This concludes staff's presentation, and I am available for questions if you have any.
Thank you. Counsel, did you have a chance to make sure that we are on board with all the language in this, the revised language in this application?
Yes, I did. In fact, I worked with planning on the language.
It's, so far, we feel that it's adequate from your point of view.
That's correct.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, do you have any technical questions for staff? Commissioner Gomez?
Just the, on the slopes, we currently do have abandoned wells there on the slopes, too. It was a. Was it clear?
Through the chair, let me just verify. The sloped areas in the development location are unique because it's not quite a hillside. They're just like these little benches. So looking at the project plans, I don't have my readers on. It appears there are some wellheads located under a few areas of slopes.
Commissioner Gomez?
Then this renewable energy, does it eventually wind up with central coast energy or community energy or something like that? Or do you know who the buyer is of this energy? Do we know?
Through the chair. So the energy produced by this facility would be solely used onsite, so it would not go back to the grid or be sold. It isn't a commercial project.
Well, indirectly, it's going to remove some demand on our public system so that the private business can use its own standalone energy. So they're indirectly, right? Any other questions for staff? The applicant or the applicant's representative want to say anything at this point? You're welcome to do so. Come on down.
Good morning. My name's Andrew Cochran. I'm representing California Resources Corporation. Appreciate the hard work and consideration of this project. I did just want to address that we do... we're in full agreement with all conditions of approval, including the indemnification agreement. You pointed out a couple of things. We are very excited about this project, reducing the grid impact in the local area and being able to power our entire operation with renewable energy. With that, we recommend adoption. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else in the public who would like to comment on this scene? Unless... There's one other person in the room, but I think he's a related individual. I don't see anybody coming down in person. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody remotely?
There are no additional emails and no hands up on Zoom.
Very well. That would leave nothing for the applicant to respond to, so I'm going to go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to the commission, since there's nothing for the staff to respond to either. Commissioners, Commissioner Getzelman?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I would like to move for the adoption of the staff recommendation on this project. In my mind, this is the type of project that we need probably more of, and that we're taking land that was, you know, contributing, or maybe I shouldn't say contributing. Well, it was certainly in a fossil fuel use and converting it into solar. And then, of course, as was pointed out by Chair Deal, they are also reducing their demand from the grid that the rest of us pay for. So in all, I believe this project is about as good as you're going to get for that part of the county. So I'm more than happy to recommend we adopt this resolution. Thank you.
So has been a motion? Is there a second?
A second.
Commissioner Work sends that motion. Is there further discussion? No, I would only discuss and say, yay, renewable energy projects coming forward without a lot of public conversation. What a nice thing that is to see. I'm going to go ahead and take the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. And any abstentions? You've got to do it on the microphone. Practice.
I'm abstaining.
And the reason would be?
This is a continued hearing, and I haven't had a chance to review the original.
Perfect. Thank you very much. So that vote passes, and that does that, and brings us to other matters. Madam Secretary?
We have no other matters. I do have a department report, if you're prepared for that.
There you go.
I just wanted to personally welcome our new commissioner, and thank you for joining. And I do look forward to being in touch and having you blend in with our procedures and getting you some resources. So just welcome. A couple of other items I did want to flag for the commission and the public. I did want to let you know, we did receive an appeal of the Red Barn approval that the commission recently approved. Staff is working to identify a date that that appeal could go to the board. It would be tentative February 4th, but that is not finalized yet. Also, wanted to just advise that PLN 000696, so obviously that's a 23-year on the book, Harper Canyon Project, has been moving and is tentatively scheduled for the board to consider that on January 28th. And I wanted to alert that on January 29th, so at your next meeting, it will be the afternoon, will be a scheduled joint meeting with the Land Use Advisory Committees. So we're working to get that scheduled. And thanks to our clerk and team for working to get the LEUAC members available for that meeting. Just a couple organizational updates. So as we've mentioned, the county, in this challenging budget year, has a hiring freeze. Our department submitted, related to planning largely, we submitted three requests for exemptions from that hiring freeze that were granted. So we received an okay to move forward with recruitment for principal planner, as well as a assistant associate planner position vacancy, and one of our vacant secretary position for the hard-working team that supports all that we do. So we will... More to come on those positions as we've just received those exemptions. With that, I will end with a very sad congratulatory note for our principal planner, Anna Kanga. Her last day with the county will be January 28th. This will be her last Planning Commission meeting. She has been with the county for 22 years. She's an amazing asset, and she is leaving us for an amazing opportunity and promotion, going to the city of Carmel to be their Community Development Director. So just want to thank her for that. That is a big gap that we will be addressing as best we can. More to come there, but really just congratulations. And I'm glad we realized that today was her last day, so we didn't forget to let you all know because many of you have worked with her for quite a while.
I want to know if we get to vote on this. I'm against it.
We try.
But I'm always happy to hear about good opportunities. So I join in congratulations and regret because we will miss you here. We will very much miss you here. Anything else? You just do that and then walk away? Sounds like you. All right. If there's no other business before the commission, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting at 11:38, it says here. Thank you very much, and we'll see you again in a couple of weeks.